And please come see us at P D C C when we have the telescopes out. You'll see what you are missing if you lose your night sky. Okay?
We have so much to do.
Hello, my name is Michael Weiner. I am at 3375 East Glory Road, basically right near the regional park. I have been here Cave Creek resident for about five years. When I retired, I did a major tour of the United States trying to figure out where I wanted to live. One of the things was going to be someplace I could see the Milky Way. I moved here from Los Angeles and at any point in time, if I looked up in the sky, I saw lots of lights, airplanes. Five airplanes, maybe one planet. So, I really enjoy the fact, and one of the reasons I moved here, was to be able to have dark skies. And I really am hoping that you guys, Mayor, the council, go ahead and agree to this. Professionally, I'm former satellite designer. Those of you sitting back here can take a look, and I was one of the people that designed the James Webb Space Telescope, which is the follow-on to the Hubble. And I'll just turn around.[95.32][95.32](laughter)[96.32][96.32](applause) So, one of the reasons why the space telescopes exist is because of the fact that we don't really have dark enough skies here. You also want to get above the atmosphere, which causes other problems. So, professionally, I've always been interested in this, and it is, we have an opportunity here to go ahead and continue doing this. As far as in terms of this, we should be a seed for the rest of Arizona. There's, it, we can, if you look south, you see a lot of night glow. So, I think that the solution is, we do it, Carefree does it, North Scottsdale does it, and continue marching south. And it's not difficult to do. As people have said, safety is not compromised, and so we can go ahead and end up with a dark sky community, and maybe we can end up having Phoenix and the entire area interior have it. So, one more thing. How many of you here appreciate dark skies and the ability to be able to see stars? Raise your hand.[166.31][166.31](laughter) Okay. Thank you very much.[169.31][169.31](applause)
There's meteor shower now.
Yeah? Precipits.
Yep.
Comets.
Lisa Greenman.
Hi. I wanted to pick up on some of the things that Bruce left off, and I wanted to say that this is not another layer of government telling us what to do. As a town, we are volunteering to join with cities, towns, and parks around the world to be dark sky certified. And the best way for this to happen is through ongoing educational programs. That has been the thrust of this the entire time, is that you educate your neighbor, you educate your friend. And, as you pointed out, the enthusiasm for this in that meeting was phenomenal. And you have an opportunity right now to coalesce the town of Cave Creek into real civic pride. And I first came out here in 1974 with my parents, Mary and Paul Schilling. Some of you know Buzz Schilling. And his whole thing of being and coming out as a, first as a snowbird, and then finally moving out here in the 90s, was that you give back to your community, and you have civic pride, and you get involved, and you tell your neighbors, and you communicate with them, and you work together. And I just feel that the I D A certification will be a point of civic pride for Cave Creek, as it already is in Flagstaff. You talk to the people in Flagstaff, Sedona, and Fountain Hills, and they're thrilled to say that they are an I D A certified dark skies community. And those are just the ones in Arizona. Imagine knowing that in a short drive northeast of Phoenix and Scottsdale is an area where one can still see the Milky Way, where the townspeople not only protect the land, but they take great pride to also protect the night sky from the light pollution. Becoming a dark sky community brings a certain status, and that status, that status will only increase through the years, as people become more aware of the negative effects of light pollution. We're already starting to understand the health, the detriment to our health of having light pollution. So, we're ahead of the curve here, when we can say, in Cave Creek, we're trying to do something about that. So, tonight, I'm asking the council, a unanimous vote would be terrific for the non-binding dark sky resolution before you. And then, we'll take this first, it's like a historic step on becoming the 23rd international dark sky designated community in the world. Not America, not Arizona, the friggin' world, okay?[349.12][349.12](laughter) (applause)
Bob Vorus.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, my name is Bob Vorus. Excuse me. I'm president of Cave Creek, and for full disclosure, I'm also a member of the Planning Commission. I've been its chairman for the last three years. And I am a proponent of dark skies. I'm just not a proponent of the I D A certification. I believe that it's excessive, intrusive, and costly, and will not advance Cave Creek's dark skies beyond where we are today. My philosophy is that when the scarce resources of the town, that's money, time, and people, are deployed, it should be where those resources can generate real, tangible, and demonstrable benefit to the town. Chasing I D A dark sky certification and doing what is required to maintain it does not accomplish this. Further, I believe that the best government is that government which is closest to the people. Just what we're involved with tonight, where a citizen like me can stand face-to-face with my elected officials in a setting like this and express myself without a filter to people who can act without deferring to anyone or anything else. I'm setting aside state and federal laws, which we all have to abide by. So, what do we give up if we go down this road of I D A certification? We give up local control to an international organization with...
No.
No.
May I speak? May I speak? I sat quietly and listened to all of you. Thank you. What do we give up if we go down this road of I D A certification? We give up local control to an international organization with preset codes and standards that we had no input into, and that do not take into consideration our unique town. We give up the ability to choose what's right for us. Some distant organization tells us what we can have, where we can have it, and how much of it we can have. The town has experienced firsthand the rancor from its citizens when an entity was placed between them and the town decision-makers. I was involved firsthand as chairman of the Planning Commission. The issue was Silverman Estates. I'm sure a lot of you remember that. The problem was federal law governing fair housing standard and protected classes of people. Town had no options and was compelled against the wishes of those closest to the issue, the citizens, no option but to grant the application in order to avoid a lawsuit that it could not win. The I D A is a quasi-governmental entity. It will be inserted between the citizens and their elected officials and their legitimate town government as an extra level of government for the purpose of imposing codes, regulations, standards of governing, and effectively apportioning taxes for the illusion of a benefit of dark sky. And I'll explain what I mean by an illusion of a benefit to the town a little later. With respect to I D A apportioning taxes, certification is not without resource cost, time, money, and personnel. Someone has to have the correct skill to set, the correct skill set to revise our perfectly good outdoor lighting ordinances for residential and commercial applications. Dr. John Barrington, Executive Director of Public Policy International Dark Sky Association, in an August 15th email stated, quote, this is going to be a shock to some of you, "A substantial revision of the existing code would be required in order to bring the ordinance into alignment with our program requirements. I want to make it clear that this would not be a trivial undertaking," end of quote. Someone has to survey all the properties in town to determine the I D A dictated allowed amount of lighting for each parcel. The I D Program Guidelines on Page 3 and 5, minimum requirements for all communities, requires a policy to address overlighting such as lumens per net acre caps, irrespective of shielding, of the shielding state, or maximum illumination specifications. According to Dr. Barron, site limits are a hard, this is quote, "Site limits are a hard requirement of our program." The specification is typically given in total lumens per net acre. That's also from an 815 email. You know what a net, you know what any of that means? A net acre is defined as a total acreage of the parcel, less any amount of that acreage consisting of undeveloped land on which is not situated structures, hardscape slash impervious cover. In other words, everything on your lot, your house, your garage, your barn, your pool, your patio, whatever, is subtracted from your net acreage, and that is used to determine what your net, what your allowance in lumens is. By the way, does anybody know what a lumen is?
Yeah.
Good. You're ahead of the curve. You're ahead of the curve.
We can see our neighbors what a lumen is.
Someone has to be responsible for accomplishing the ongoing I D A mandated compliance requirements. Dr. Barrington, in the same 815 email, said, quote, "We expect that a municipality participating in our program will properly enforce its code." Will properly enforce its code. And in response to a question from the audience at the July 22nd rollout at the library, I'm paraphrasing the question, says, "We have a complaint-driven system. How's code enforcement work?" Dr. Barrington's response was, quote, "I don't see that as an obstacle that can't be overcome." I have no idea what that means in relationship to his previous statement, which is, "We expect that a municipality participating in our program will properly enforce its code." Someone will have to do the ongoing certification required, excuse me, someone will have to do the ongoing required reporting to I D A to maintain certification. At the July 22nd rollout, Dr. Barrington stated, quote, "We're not going to move the goalposts on you once you apply under the program guidelines that exist at the time. So, it's kind of one and done, as long as you keep reporting to us." Someone will have to be responsible for the ongoing education of the community. I actually agree with this. This is a good point, and it's something that we don't do, and we can do it. And it's been expressed tonight in the audience that it's a desirable thing. And I would get behind that 100 percent. Program guidelines, the I D A Program Guidelines on Page 7, needs a community to show commitment to dark skies and quality shown by, A, a municipal support of dark skies and quality lighting as demonstrated by city publications, flyers, public service announcements, funding of lighting upgrades, et cetera. These costs do not address the personal time, effort, and stress of private property owners to comply with the I D A edicts. According to the International Dark Sky Community Program Guidelines, June 2018, quote, "Minimum requirements for all communities," on Page 6, the community has to have a quality, comprehensive lighting policy like the I D A International Dark Sky slash I E S, which is the Illuminating Engineering Society Model Lighting Ordinance, that includes all of the following minimum standards for permanent lighting installations, including a policy called amortization, which is sort of an odd name, but this is what they call it. And what it says is, "Applicable to all publicly and privately owned lighting, publicly and privately owned lighting, to end not more than 10 years from the date, the effective date of the outdoor lighting policy, after which all non-conforming lighting extent," meaning existing at the time of the enactment, "must be brought into compliance with the policy." Now, they're talking not about the fact that your lighting may be in compliance with the town of Cave Creek's lighting ordinance, but not in, but not in conforming to their standards.
Three minutes.
The town actually has actually five years to come into compliance. Mr. Mayor, may I continue?
Yes.
I've listened.
We all get two.
You've, you have listened to a number of people tonight. I'm asking for equal time. You need to have information, correct information, if you're going to make an informed vote on this. And I'm providing you not what these people have provided you. I'm actually providing you quotes out of their own documents, and quotes from their statements, and written...
Taken out of context.
Yes. Sorry.
All right. I'm going to move on. So, even if your outdoor lighting is compliant with town code, is still maintained and functional, and aesthetically pleasing to you, and you like it, and you don't want to pay for new lighting, you will replace it.
Mayor budgets not better.
Some improvement...
Okay. I gave Mr. Arlen five minutes. I'm giving...
He's over five minutes. Way over five minutes. Way over five minutes.
Mr. Arlen had 10.
Arlen had 10?
No, you don't know, Susan.
Yes, I did. I just heard Jane said it was 10.
Carry on.
I'm sorry.
I'm almost, I've got a lot more to say here, and it's important for you to hear it. It's important for you people to hear it. I appreciate your enthusiasm.
Why did you get to go last? You put your name in first.
I asked to go last. Some, some improvement of outdoor lighting code and public education the town might legitimately elect to do on its own, such as, update its outdoor lighting ordinances to address modern methods of evaluating lighting, changing watts to lumens, addressing the light spectrum, implementing a regular public of information... I wrote it. Implement a regular public information program regarding, and many of these things have been mentioned tonight, the best practices for landscape lighting, being a good neighbor with your outdoor lighting, what to look for when replacing your outdoor lighting, who to, who to contact if you have a question about lighting, what to do if you can't resolve a lighting problem with your neighbor. But these changes are minimal in comparison with I D A certification, can be done on our timeframe, using our values as resources permit. These kinds of changes will result in minimal intrusion, disruption, resource costs, and inconvenience to the town or its citizens. The costs will be minor compared to the I D A requirements. Dr. Barrington, at the July 22nd rollout, said, quote, "We do not want you to feel that like this is, we want you to feel like this is an achievable thing," meaning certification, "and that we are not taking anything away from anybody," end of quote. That statement is not consistent with my reading and understanding of the I D A policy, the Joint I D A slash I E S Model Lighting Ordinance with its user guide, or the documented oral and written statements made by Dr. Barrington. Bruce Arlen's August 7th editorial in the Snore News mentions, among other Cave Creek pioneers and early officials, quote, "Steve Lamar is promoting a far-reaching vision of our town ordinance, lighting ordinance, during the incorporation of our town, and we are still benefiting from those effects today." I strongly agree with Bruce's assessment of the fact that we are current, that we currently have a strong lighting, outdoor lighting code from which we are benefiting. And we did it without I D A. Steve Lamar is the current Planning Commissioner and a colleague. In the regular Planning Commission meeting, May 16th, on a matter unrelated to the issue at hand, Steve stated, as reflected in the minutes, quote, "He has defended small towns in the past and doesn't know if this is a good public policy to defer to activist organizations to run the town for you." My response in the same minutes was to agree with Lamar's comments, quote, "We can't let outside organizations govern our town for us."
Mayor budget, point of order, please.
Last Thursday, August 15th, at the Planning Commission meeting, I asked Steve privately, felt the same way with respect to the I D A certification proposal, and he responded, without hesitation or equivocation, yes. I contend that the dark sky community certification is an illusion, because the I D A or certification cannot guarantee dark sky, because it cannot control what happens outside the boundaries of Cave Creek.
10 minutes.
To quote, to quote...
10 minutes.[1155.15][1155.15](applause)
To quote, I'm getting to important parts here. To quote...[1162.15][1162.15](laughter)
I'm likely going to have a riot in this room. We, Bob, I'm sorry.
We're done.
I'm likely going to have a riot in here.
Let me finish with one thing.
One thing? Okay.
In response to a question from the audience at the July 22nd rollout, Dr. Barrington said, quote, "It's hard," there was a question about astrotourism, Dr. Barrington said, quote, "It's harder to do the tourism angle when you're situated at the edge of a big city, and it's not because of anything you're doing right or wrong, it's because you have a big city that's following the night sky. So, it's probably not going to be as much of a big draw in a place like Fountain Hills or Cave Creek. It tends to be in the smaller communities that are more rural that have seen a bigger impact from the astrotourism." I've got, if I could just have a few more minutes.
No.
Please stop making jokes. This is not a presentation.
There's more to this, there's more to this than meets the eye.
Then you should have put in a presentation.
Yes, you're right. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for your attention. And thank you also. I appreciate your enthusiasm, I really do. I think it's your right to...
So, is that all of them?[1248.15][1248.15](applause) Okay, we're back to council.
Mr. Mayor. Motion to approve Resolution Number R 2019-14, a resolution of the Mayor and the Town Council of the Town of Cave Creek, Maricopa County, Arizona, declaring as a public record a certain document, and filed with the town clerk, and entitled, "Resolution to Establish the Town of Cave Creek as a Certified International Dark Skies Association I D A Community."
Second.
You had the motion?
I support what this audience wants. It was a fabulous meeting. Bruce, you did a great job. I'm sorry you felt like you had to defend yourself here tonight. I think a little bit of that might have been miscommunicated. I don't think this council is opposed. I think we're all in favor of dark skies. I think I D A will just enhance it.
Thank you.
Thank you.[1304.26][1304.26](applause)
Councilman Deefen Duffer.
I'd like to make an observation. We've had council meetings that have dealt with water, and you need water to live.[1316.15][1316.15](laughter) And I look at the, how few people attended those meetings, and then I look at this meeting where dark skies is a quality of issue, and how many people are here tonight. The message I'm getting is that dark skies are more important than water, and I'm going to have to agree with you on that.[1333.01][1333.01](laughter) I've moved out here, I've been coming out here since the 70s. I moved out here in the 90s. And one of the cool things that sets Cave Creek apart, that makes us Cave Creek, is our dark skies. Is this the end all be all? No, but it's an important step, and we on the council need to recognize that this is important, and we need to have the cojones to embrace that and enforce it when we need to. First of all, education, that's very important. But I ran on the slogan of Keep it Creeker, also Keep it Dark Skies.[1370.15][1370.15](applause)
Well, I think there are two things for me. One is personal. I mean, I, I do love the dark skies. I, I think Cave Creek is unique. I think this makes Cave Creek more unique. It's a community amenity. The town does not spend enough or do enough for amenities. We're always dealing with the water issues. So, I'm, personally, I'm in favor of it. But more than that, it seems like the community is overwhelmingly in favor of it. Overwhelmingly in favor of, if it, it may, it's going to cost some more, but it's a, it's a standard, and it's something that Cave Creek can be proud of, and if the community wants it with this kind of enthusiasm, and I personally support it, I'm going to vote yes.[1423.41][1423.41](applause)
Councilman McGuire.
Pardon me, I've taken some notes here. I'm really torn on this issue. I've had some good discussions with Mr. Arlen, maybe with Mr. Hughes. I think it is important that we have a dark skies community. I am concerned about the way that we go about it. I'd love to have a sign as you're coming into Cave Creek saying, "We value our dark skies." That I would fully be in support of. I think that what Mr. Vorus read were direct quotes. I'm getting different answers from people on, well, this is what has to happen, and reading from their literature, and other people saying, well, it's not really mandatory. And I'm not sure where it is, except that people are so enthused about it that they're trying to find excuses as to why we don't have to follow what they have put in print. What is in print is very important. I love the dark skies. I have a telescope. I love being able to see the Milky Way here. That's one of the things. I have had a concern about my neighbor who came in, and I said, "I hope you're not going to put in outdoor lighting." Well, they're suburban. That's our big problem, is that we're changing to suburban. I don't like it. I hate it. I remember one of the council people, she's not here tonight, who stood up in a meeting and said, "We are not Scottsdale." But she was right. We are not Scottsdale. We are a community that values the desert. We are a community that values the, the dark skies. And, and I'm fully supportive of that. That's really the big one. Now, clearly, Luke has indicated we do need to change our ordinances, and probably there are some, hopefully, whether or not the dark skies passes tonight, there will be some help that we would get in terms of changing ordinances. Luke spoke about the need to go to lumens, which is a measure of the quantity of light. I believe it's the light energy, but it's the quantity of light. That's what a lumen is, rather than worrying about voltage, or wattage, or things like that. So, we do need to make some, some changes. I'm very concerned about what this means in terms of a town policy. Complaint-driven zoning is something that a lot of people don't understand, and I'm not sure I even understand it, except that if it's a matter of health, safety, welfare, let's stress, stress the health and safety. Our staff will go out and they will police the town, and make sure that you're safe, and make sure that no one's doing anything that impedes your health. If it's a quality of life issue, they don't go out there and look for people who are violating it. And I think that's, that's a part of what Cave Creek wants. They don't want the government to come out and tell them, be it the town or whomever, this is what you have to do. That, it just seems an anathema. That's a part of why I'm torn, Mr. Arlen. I truly am torn on this issue.
I can answer that question. I can answer.
We're beyond conversation here. The council, back to council.
So, I'm, I'm really very much torn on this. I, I see some unintended consequences here that really concern me. But boy, I want to preserve the dark skies. I truly do. They, they are very important. That's a major reason I'm here. We turn off our outside lights at night. And, and I spoke to the lady, I asked her, "Did those people actually change their lighting?" And I think the answer I got was, well, they haven't yet changed their lighting. And...
Haven't changed them yet.
Yeah, haven't yet changed the lighting. So, you know, even as the ordinances as we have them now, it's difficult to enforce them. So, I, I think I've added to the confusion enough.
Councilmember Clancy.
Well, I didn't hear your vote.
Yeah.
Pardon?
I didn't hear your vote.
People are not sure.
Yeah, I, I use the word torn. At this point, I am tending toward not taking the dark skies label because of exactly the things that, that Mr. Vorus talked about. I just am seeing different answers here, a conflict between what's printed, and I'm hearing from some people and other people who are very enthusiastic about the dark skies, but saying, well, you know, that really isn't important.
The wording you read was for cities like Phoenix.
We're, we're beyond the conversation. Please be quiet.
This is the dark skies issue. Is that clear?
Sure, that's clear. I, I gotta probably echo much of what you said. When I moved out here in 81, and worked with school board, and made sure that when the annexation wars started, and Tatum Ranch was coming up, and getting rid of our dark skies that we had out here, that actually went from Cave Creek all the way to Bell Road is where it went. And it slowly came upon us, and is sitting on the school board at the time, and in my neighborhood, we fought Phoenix. In fact, we fought Phoenix to the point where, as you drive... In fact, we fought Phoenix to the point where, as you drive up Cave Creek Road towards Cave Creek, you notice how the light changes. That is something that I've worked on as well. And we got that through, because we said, "This is Cave Creek." So I sat on the school board, we got calls from parents who were, or people who lived up on the mountain, that said, "You're invading our light. I mean, we're up on Black Mountain. This is in the early '90s." So what did we do on the school board? We took all our lights. We made sure they were down. They were turned off by nine o'clock or 10 o'clock, automatic lights. We took care of it. I think we live in a dark town. I think that what we have is amazing. It seems to me, what I see here, are folks who have a problem with a neighbor. And going to a neighbor and asking them, "Would you please respect the environment we live in?" That's part of education. But to turn our town into an HOA, and have an outside, show me a show of hands. How many of you read all 99 pages from dark skies, and that you know it well? Just put your hand up. Okay, I've got one person.
You guys did it. Did you read all 99 pages?
Oh, I got it from other people as well, yes. But that's beside the point. Because that's part of what I think we sense, and I think for some of us who've been here 32 years, part of it is talking to your neighbor. And at this point in time, I'm conflicted, because I think that we can do it as a town, and we can do it together, without having the possibility of approving something that could come back and bite us in the rear end. And until that is cleared up, I have to say that I am torn, and that I have a difficulty with okaying it.
Vice Mayor.
Me?
Yeah, it's your turn.
Okay.
Step in front of the firing squad.
No, it isn't in there.
I'll start off by saying that I made a decision when I ran for office to not vote for political expediency. I'm not gonna vote one way or another, because I think I can garner some votes. That's one thing.
That's hard.
The other thing is, I have a concern that there is a latent requirement for enforcement in this, and that it's going to be a problem in the town. We've had this, you know, kind of a fiat way of dealing with enforcement in the past, and there, I can drive down streets today, and I can see every third or fourth house has something that's out of compliance. If we're required by an outside entity to comply, force compliance with all of our regulations, it's gonna be a big problem, and a lot of you won't like it, because you're gonna get hit. So that's what my vote is gonna be based on.
May I make one more statement?
Sure, Tom.
If this would be simple, if it was a matter of saying, "We buy into this," because I truly do buy into the idea of keeping our skies dark, but it's not that simple.
Did you wanna say something, Mr. Sims?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, if I could help you. This is only a first step. When I read the second-to-last paragraph of the memo that Luke wrote, it says, "Dr. Barrington disclosed that the IDA certification would require complete compliance within a specific period of time." The only way you as a council can pass laws to require property owners in this town to use their property in a certain way is not by this resolution. You can only do it, and you could all unanimously support this if you agree with the intent, is that then you would take the IDA at their recommendation to assist you, and you'd have to staff an amendment to your zoning code through the commission. This resolution is completely ineffective. I'll have to sign it, and I will, because it says voluntary. And they've said three or four times tonight, "Volunteer." And I take this simply as a statement of intent of a goal. And that's perfectly fine to have a goal. But to reach the closure of complete compliance will require an amendment to your zoning code, which you can't do tonight. But what you can do as a council is pass this, you could pass this unanimously, because it is voluntary. You can't amend, you cannot amend your zoning code by resolution. And the only way you can change the right to use property is an amendment to your zoning code. And so I think, if you wish, you could pass this, and say it's a statement of intent. You could ask your zoning administrator, who's really done quite good work. When I read his analysis, it was really inspiring to see how he drove around town, looking to see how well you have done. But when I read that second-to-last paragraph, I know you're gonna need to amend your zoning code, and that requires a formal process. So you could have passed this and direct staff to work with the IDA to get their recommendations, what they said they could do free of charge, and then you have to staff through your commission and come back to you. But I can't sign this if any of you think this is mandatory, because it's not.
All right, so now it's up to me. Here we go. One of the things I've always believed about the way you get along in Cave Creek is you've got multiple interests. You've got, you folks are in here primarily because you wish to have dark skies. We pretty much have dark skies currently, because the founding fathers of our town, that was one of the goals that they were shooting for. And I appreciate the work they did, I really do, or we wouldn't be sitting here being close to it right now. I believe, from my perspective, that I would rather see the individual mandates or suggestions from the International Dark Skies before we go down this road, because while you folks may like that, there may be people down your street who wanna do nighttime roping in their arena, and is that gonna be an issue with their stuff? So I would rather look at the things, change wattage to lumens, make those changes that make sense to us. But I don't wanna step on, the other people with the other interests aren't here tonight, because they don't think that they're gonna get hurt. And I, you know, that's just where I'm coming from. I am actually gonna vote no on the thing. So, y'all, that, you, you, well, that's cool. You threatened me. I don't care. All right, let's take a roll call on this one.
So we can get greater clarity. What you're saying is, it's, can you repeat the key parts of it? Because what I, the last thing I wanna see in this town is an HOA approach to other people who are not here. And I said the same thing about roping myself, only because I'm watching a program about it, and I didn't realize that you could make $4 million with these special horses. But they're up a lot. But I think we need a great deal of clarity if we aren't going for certification, and we want to follow some rules and regulations. But again, it is neighbor to neighbor, but that's where the clarity's gotta come in. So I would think at this time...
I wanna avoid it in any state, just as much as you do.
Yeah.
All right.
So the solution to that is to get greater clarity on...
On what we're signing up for.
Right, I agree. And if that's, and if that's how we're looking at it, then I would be, at this time, a no vote as well.
All right.
I think our council has lost its way. I think that we have lost the pulse of our community. If you were at that meeting, you would know what this community is in favor of, and you would support this endeavor. We are, it's non-committal. We can move forward as a resolution. We could work with IDA for free. You're saying you don't want an HOA? You sure didn't sound that way with the signage ordinance. I hate to bring that up, but it's very similar. We have an opportunity to work with the Goldwater Institute and the Judicial Institute to make sure that our signage ordinance is complete and legal. And now we have an opportunity to work with the IDA to make sure that we can work under their guidance, and that this will be doable for our community. This is not a commitment. This is work in progress, and we should support it. And you should reconsider right now, before this community turns on you. We're doing a good job as a council. We need to stick together. We need to keep working together in the future. And these people will make sure if we do or don't.
Yes.
Councilmember McGuire.
Well, I said I was torn. I hope that this comes back with more clarity. I'm just getting different opinions from different people as to what this means. It's not clear to me what we would be committed to, and therefore...
Nothing. Our lawyer told us we weren't. That was the clarity. We're not committed to anything right now.
You have two options. You have three options. One, you could turn this down. Two, you could support it, and I don't know what it means, because it says voluntary, but then it says complete compliance. Or three, if you truly wish to enforce dark skies, is to do it correctly by amending your zoning code, en tabling this, and directing your planning commission to come back with a recommendation after consulting with the IDA.
The chair of the planning commission just told us how he feels about it. I doubt if they're gonna come back with a positive response.
But that's up to them.
No, it's up to us. It's up to us. We heard the presentation.
The way your code works, the text amendment to the zoning code has to come through the planning commission.
Yeah. There may be other people on the planning commission that don't agree with it, and that's good. That's fine.
When I read a resolution, I have a tendency to read things literally. I don't see any mealy-mouthing here. It says, "Resolved that we will declare their intent and desire, et cetera, et cetera." It doesn't say, "Well, kinda look it over and check with people and think about it." Is that what you think it means?
If you decide to adopt this, I think you have to adopt it with a directive. If you simply mean this as a statement of intent, and you ask the planning and zoning commission to come back with a recommendation. I said, "This is ineffective. This will not change the zoning code. This is a statement of intent."
I understand that, but I just don't like having, signing onto a resolution that doesn't, it doesn't mean what the resolution says, or it won't be implemented the way the resolution says.
And counselor, what you told us, you're looking at the same document. In one part of the document, it says mandatory, and the other part of it, that's my problem.
If you wish to...
It's my problem.
You have to say, "Well, I can sign this," but you're directing that it's ineffective until planning and zoning commission can come back with a recommendation, because of the inconsistency between the last whereas and the actual...
I have trouble voting for something that's inconsistent. So I think my vote is next. And I'm sorry, I'm voting no.
Vice Mayor Smith.
Well, you know, I'm really sorry I got Bruce upset. I ask questions because I wanna find answers. I'm about as up in the air on this thing as Councilman McGuire is, and I don't like approving a resolution that doesn't mean what the resolution says, or won't mean that.
Well, that's why, Ms. Westman, I said your option could be, is to table it, get it certified.
Well, I would...
I would be in favor of table.
I would be in favor of that.
Of tabling it, to a week of clarity.
I just don't, I just don't think that this is what we want. I think that dark skies is a great idea. It's a wonderful thing for the community, but I think that there are intangibles here that are going to be bothersome in the future. So...
You know, I'm gonna jump in here a second.
Turn your mic on.
Yeah. This is the first step. We can bail out anytime in the future we want to. Yes, we can. And it pisses me off to no end that we've been put up here by the citizens, and we've in the past said, "Dark skies are important. We have lighting ordinances, but, oh, we're not going to enforce them, and we don't want anyone else out there." This is bullshit. If we're gonna have ordinances, we shouldn't be happy to enforce them. We should be happy to say, "Citizens, this is so important to us that we put it in an ordinance, and we hope you comply voluntarily, but if you don't, it's so important to us, we will kick you in the butt if we need to." But to sit here and say that this is going to be the ruin of Cave Creek if we go this route, this is the first step. And I cannot believe that you wouldn't vote yes on this. This is, we can bail. We can go down the road and say, "No, we don't wanna change anything." But if we don't take the first step, I gotta believe that no more clarity can be made if we had 1,000 meetings, if it isn't clear right now that this is the step to take.
Mr. Mayor, may I make a motion to table this?
Can we already have a motion?
We already have one on the table. We're gonna have to approve.
You have to reject this, and you can make your...
So where were you at?
I think I was at no.
Councilmember DeFenderfer.
Hell, yes.
Oh, I thought I already voted. I voted, personally, it needs more clarity. I'm with the four who say no. I'm going to have to say no until we can maybe bring it back and get greater clarity, and maybe we can find out what really is taking place if we do join an organization that will be telling us what we can and cannot do in our community.
Councilmember Royay.
Working in collaboration with us.
Who'd you say?
Royay.
Councilwoman Royer.
Yes, sorry.
She said yes.
I did say yes. Yes, 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 yes.
Mayor Bunch.
This is the point where I lower my head and sit here and just contemplate everything. I still am worried about unintended consequences on the other 5,300 people who are not involved in this issue right now.
No, they're not involved.
I'm gonna go no.
They're not here. They're not involved. They don't get it.
I didn't interrupt you when you were voting.
I'm sorry.
So it's a no. So motion fails, 4-3. Do we have another motion?
Tom? You wanna bring it back?
I'd like to bring this back with, so that we can clarify.
Can we, can we get some clarification of what the actual dark skies?
I'd like to see a resolution between what's in print and what other people are telling us. There's just, there's such conflict there.
Okay. Staff got direction? Tom, or Bill?
The question is, do you wish to have the zoning code amended? If the answer is yes, to cause the town to become a dark town.
Oh, goodness.
Jurisdiction. I think you could, the IDA offered their services, get them to propose their language?
Yeah, that's what I'd like to see.
And then have your zoning administrator look at that, and staff that through the commission.
That's, that would be the direction here.
And it would be helpful to have someone from IDA here that can say, "What Mr. Vorus said is not correct. I'm sorry, I don't agree with those sentences," or to show that it was taken out of context.
No.
So that's, so that's, that would, that would be the course for my, do we need to vote on that direction?
You give your zoning administrator directions, contact the IDA, get them to submit...
The changes.
Text the language, so he can look at it, and we can coordinate that with you and your commission.
Okay, works for me. All right, do we need to take a break?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Five minutes.
That was a tough one.